...call this meeting the order, meeting order. The selectmen are here, resident and/or one of four. Transferring the...
February warrants with number fifteen, fifteen A, sixteen, and sixteen A. The motion...
They're moved.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor? Anyamis? There are no meeting minutes to approve, so go right to our seven o'clock appointment with Ann Burkhouse, Andrea Hauser, and Adele Passmore for the Sarah D.J. Carter Lecture Fund Committee for their one-hundredth anniversary program. Ladies, good evening. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us, inviting us. The first, a few words about Sarah. I put a couple of posters in front of some of you, so I'm sure you're well aware that we're about to have a new program presented to the town. We're quite excited to vote. But a first, a few words about Sarah. Sarah Davis Jaquith was born in eighteen thirty-two into one of Wilmington's earliest families, that of Abraham Jaquith. Sarah taught school in the Old Center School. Now, it's the Fourth of July building. In eighteen seventy-four, she married Cyrus Louis Carter. They lived on the corner of Main Street and Middlesex Avenue. Today, a bank sits on the site. The house was moved across the street, and it is now number six, Middlesex Avenue. Sarah died in nineteen oh-seven. She had no children. In her will, she gave the town of Wilmington $6,000, a lot of money in her day, to invest the principal sum and expend the income in maintaining courses of lectures for the people of Wilmington. The first Sarah D.J. Carter Lecture Fund Committee, of which we three are today, was appointed in nineteen oh-nine. And then, on October twenty-eighth, nineteen ten, the first program was an illustrated lecture of Old England and Ireland. It was presented in the Town Hall, which is now the Wilmington Center for the Arts. Since that time, the Carter Lecture Fund Committee has presented, through Sarah's foresight and generosity, many fine free programs, which have entertained and enlightened Wilmington residents for one hundred years. We're probably proud of that. During recent years, our programs have been held in the high school, and then most recently in the new middle school on Carter Lane. Wilmington residents have enjoyed a vast array of lectures and concerts. Our musical programs have always been most well-attended and received. There has been music of the colonial period, the Civil War, World War II. We've presented sea shanties, folk songs, and bluegrass music. We've witnessed an accordion war year, and even Elvis has been in the building. The Carter Fund Committee is always looking for ideas for our programs. Our most well-attended concert in recent times was Rex's trailer celebrates fifty years of Boomtown. It was suggested by a Wilmington resident. About this year's program, Dixieland music was developed in New Orleans in the early eighteen nineties. The music's heyday was during nineteen tens and nineteen twenties. Is this what, was what Wilmington was listening to on their Victrolas at that time? The committee searched for a traditional Dixieland band to help us celebrate our one-hundredth anniversary. We found the Ancient Mariners, a Dixieland band based out of Weston, Massachusetts, and they have vowed to present a lively concert of toe-tapping, early music from the nineteen hundreds through the roaring twenties. The concert will include family-friendly mix of music, historical anecdotes, and humor. We invite all of Wilmington to join the Sarah D.J. Carter Lecture Fund Committee for this special one-hundredth anniversary concert program to be held on October twenty-eighth, twenty-ten, and that's a Thursday night at seven P.M. at the Wilmington Middle School Auditorium on Carter Lane. All are welcome, there is no charge. In closing, we'd like to thank the town manager for his help in promoting our programs. Putting them in town topics, on the town calendar, and on the Rotary Bulletin Board has certainly assisted us greatly in reaching the town's residents about our programs. Thank you, Mr. Kyra. And all of you men for listening, and we all hope you'll come to our program. We think you'll enjoy it and bring your families. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in, ladies.
Thank you.
And before you go, just want to say it's amazing that the work that you've continued for the past hundred years, not yourself personally, but for Sarah's behalf.
Thank you.
And is there any questions or comments from the board?
No, just thank you for the information and for taking time to be here tonight and for all the work you do.
Sounds great, sounds wonderful.
Happy to be here. Thank you all.
Thanks for sticking with it. Hundred years is remarkable.
This is very special, and we want to mark that.
Before you go, I would like to present you with a certificate of recognition.
Should we?
Sure.
Should I come up?
Sure.
From Andrea.
And it's just a sound of Wilmington's certificate of recognition, presented to the Sarah D.J. Carter Lecture Fund Committee in celebration of their one-hundredth anniversary of the Sarah D.J. Carter Lecture Series. Be good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. He's just going to come in here and explain the town of Wilmington's newly-established community-wide emergency notification system and the recently enacted cellphone law. Deputy Chief, how you doing tonight?
Good, gentlemen. Thank you for having me here tonight. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of this new emergency notification system. The town has entered into contract with the Everbridge Corporation. They're out of California. They're an industry leader in emergency notifications. We do have a current system that's in place at the police department. We've had it since two thousand and two. Back in two thousand and two, it was very good technology. It was cutting-edge, probably three or four years prior to that. The town purchased that system. We've been using it for the past eight years. However, it is old technology. It's computer-based. We have a CPU at the Public Safety Building and ten dedicated phone lines, and that's how we make the emergency communications townwide currently. That's the old system. The technology has now become unreliable. It's software and hardware-based with the CPU. If any of yous have computers, you know after a few years, they start to go. We've had several system failures. It's a very difficult system to use. It's not user-friendly. We've probably had ten or twelve people trained in it, and I think I'm the only one who still can actually get in there and get a message out. Unfortunately, I'm not there twenty-four hours a day, and it is located at the Public Safety Building. The new system is web-based. It's run by the company out in California. They take care of all the hardware, the software issues, everything. You don't have to worry about that at all. We can, excuse me, we can access that database from any computer as long as we have Internet access. So, I can do it from my house. Any of the users can do it from their house, their office, the library, anywhere they need to do it. I can actually get it from a BlackBerry, so it's time-sensitive. If something happens, we can do it wherever we're at and get those messages out in the case of an emergency. Multiple users are going to be assigned to this system. It's not just going to be the police department. The fire department will be able to use it. Public Safety Dispatch, the Board of Health, DPW, the town manager's office will be able to use that to make notifications on different types of alerts, not only just emergencies, but things like road closures, water issues, border health issues, all of those types of alerts. And each department's going to be able to make their own alerts. It's not going to have to go through the police department anymore to be able to do it by themselves from their own computer systems. This system is able to notify the community in several different ways. Most likely, we'll use a geographically-based notification where we'll bring up a map, and it uses the typical ArcGIS platform, and we'll be able to circle either a neighborhood, two houses, half the town, whatever the parameters are, we want. We can circle that and make the notifications to just that area. Right now, the database that we're using, we purchased from a company down in Tennessee. It's commercially provided data. This new system will be using the White Pages data, and that's from Verizon. The unfortunate part of that is that if you are on a cellphone, you're not going to have that number in there. If you're on Vonage or the Internet stuff, that's not going to be on there. AT&amp;T, Comcast, none of those numbers are in there. However, the good part about it is there is an opt-in page that's provided with this system that's run by the company. There'll be a link to this opt-in page on the police department's website and also on the town's website. As somebody, a resident who lives in the community or a business, you'll be able to click on that link, and that'll bring you to what's called an opt-in page, where you'll be able to add up to, I believe, ten different phone numbers and five different addresses so that the current, the information will stay current and will be accurate. The good thing about having different numbers, and obviously, the numbers will be for cellphones, home phones, alternate phones. We'll also send text messages, emails, all the current types of electronic notifications as well as the telephone. The good idea, the idea behind having the extra addresses is, I've explained before to others, that if, say I live on Main Street, Mr. McCoy, we'll use you because you're on different ends of town. You have a business on Lowell Street, and you're home, you're up off of Andover Street. So, your phone numbers will be for your address up off of Andover. Now, if something happens in that area, and we're going to make an emergency notification, we'll circle it, get the message out, blast it out, and you'll get it at your house. The problem is, if we have something that's happening down by the restaurant, and you're at home, and there's an issue going on, and we circle a geographical area, and we're going to notify the people in that area, well, if you, on your opt-in page, also put that as a secondary address, you'll get the notification at your residence or on your cellphone or whatever other numbers you list in the order you list so that you'll know that there's an issue going on in an area where you have some interest. The same goes for parents with children in schools. They'll be able to load the information for each school that the kids are in. That way, there, if we have a notification that's going out to one of the schools, the parents will be able to get that information via their cellphone or text or a home phone or whatever they provide. The system is much quicker than the other system we have. Right now, the system, the old system, uses ten dedicated phone lines, only eight of which make outgoing calls. So, if you have a thirty-second message on eight phone lines, you're only making sixteen calls a minute. Sometimes, when we've done, tried to do the entire town, it takes hours. We're talking ten, twelve, fifteen hours to notify everyone. With this system, as soon as we put it in, we can notify the whole town in approximately twenty-five to thirty minutes, and that's based on about twelve thousand households. The, like I said about the database, it will stay more reliable because most of the people will be putting their own information in there. They'll keep it up-to-date. The onus kind of falls on them to keep things updated. The company itself will keep the White Pages updated on a constant basis, so the database will be much fresher than anything we're using currently. The opt-in page allows people to put in, like I said, multiple phone numbers, multiple addresses, multiple ways to be notified. It also gives special alert types. I believe what we're going to be using is an emergency alert, which is mandatory, that everybody will get if there's some sort of emergency we want to blast out to everybody. We'll send that out, everybody will get that message. There's also going to be a general alert, which is going to be mandatory, which if we see the need, that we need to get a message out, even though maybe it's not an emergency, but we want everybody to get it, we'll use a general alert and get that out. There's also going to be DPW and utilities issues, such as road closures, water issues, things like that. The Board of Health will be able to use some of this stuff. Those are the types of alerts you can opt in or out of. So, if you don't want to be hearing about road closures, you can just opt out of that, and you won't get that message, so it won't be overbearing. The messages will be delivered to the end user intelligently, meaning you'll list the order you want to get that message in: home phone, cellphone, email, text, whatever it's going to be. As soon as the notification is made, and you get something, and you certify that you've gotten it by pressing a button on the phone, it stops the notifications. It won't call the other numbers anymore, and you won't be getting multiple notifications. The system will also allow us to do a survey. The survey and data collection is part of the system. In other words, we can issue a question, any type of question, with up to ten responses, and we can blast that out, and people can respond one through ten, whatever the answer is, in a survey-type deal. And that's all done in real time, and it will compile a report for us as we go, and we'll be able to watch it. There's a console. We can see what the numbers are coming in. It's going to be a great tool for, I talked to Terry Masiello last week, one of the alerts is going to be an elderly wellness check. So, when these people sign up for this, I'll work with Terry and everybody down the senior center. We'll get all these people signed up on this wellness program, so they'll know those days that, like in the middle of the summer, when it's real high heat or the real cold and snow, she'll be able to send out a message to all of the people that she has signed up in the system. Are you okay? Do you need anything? Multiple responses. Based on those responses, she'll have a better idea of who may need assistance and who may not in those times when the elderly are most vulnerable. Like I said, it has real-time status tracking when we give out these messages, and there's an advanced reporting that we can use to analyze what we've done and how we can do it better. All these reports will be compiled automatically when we blast out one of these notifications. We'll sit down, we'll review it, and it won't just be us, it'll be everybody else who's using the system. The DPW will be able to use it themselves, the Board of Health, anybody who might need to get one of those messages out. Right now, we're trying to get this system online this week. Most of the legwork is done. The data is in there. We're building the portals now for the links for the websites. What we'd like to do is, once I'm sure that this is online and up and running, is, we'd like to kind of do like a media blast with WCTV and the Lowell Sun and the Town Cry and the Advocate, and get the message out there that this system is here, it's available, and we'd like people to check out the webpages and opt in with their information so that they're sure to get these. That's basically just a quick overview of what the system will do and what it's capable of. Anybody have any questions?
I just think communication's key, and using the technology that's out there now is just going to make a better community. Just starting from our new website over the past year or so into this, I think it's going to really open up the lines of communication to the community a lot. I think it's great.
Back to what you said, technology's changing every single day, and it's for the benefit of everybody, and I think, just think it's wonderful it's going to happen in this community, and it's really nice to know what you're telling us, deputy. And it just reassures folks out there that if something is to happen, they're going to be notified, and people want to know what's happening in their community. It's a nice town, and that's what it's all about, and I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
I think it's been said. Got it all the bases.
It's ambitious. I give you a lot of credit for taking on the multiple channels. You mentioned SMS, text, which I guess we're going to talk about more in a moment, but texting, telephone calls, emails, cellphone. So, hypothetically, if I heard you correctly, once I go into my little opt-in portal and I sort of personalize my experience, how I will engage with this system, any notification that comes out of the system will follow the rules that I sort of apply, one, two, three, four, in that sequence?
Correct.
Okay. So, and one of the, I guess I was thinking, as you were talking, you mentioned the senior center, is getting everyone to opt in, and certainly the media, and hopefully, we can kind of just chime this bell over and over again, and eventually, we'll get people on as there. What systems or what programs do our contractor, our vendor, recommend for getting this message out and getting folks to opt in? In the absence of them opting in, if they just say, "Oh, they'll find me," we're going to, we have the White Pages as the default. Is that right?
Yes. The White Pages will be, is loaded on there right now. It's already, the White Page system is loaded in there. But, like, we've learned with the old system, that doesn't cover nearly, probably, half of the entire town, and that's one of the issues we have with the old system, is people would call and say, "My neighbor's got this message, but I didn't get it. How do I get in?" And we'd have to tell them, "We can't. I'm sorry. There's no way for us to add your data point at this point."
Oh, I see.
"We can't do it." Now, we can. I've talked with Tina Stewart down at the library. We have some of the computer terminals set up down there so that if people don't have Internet access, they can go right down there and click on the link, and they'll be in the portal. I am going to assist, I myself am going to go up and assist Terry Masiello with making sure we get all of the people who are in the senior center and the elder program under her opted into this. I'll walk them through it. We'll take care of it, make sure that everybody's in there. Terry's kind of excited because she thinks she may pick up some more people who really aren't taking advantage of the senior center and the services that Terry offers, just by word of mouth. I will be using the media relations people at Everbridge. They have a pretty good package that, you know, they've done thousands of these that they can get out to notify people. One of the biggest things is, when we first do our trial runs, we'll probably give two or three notifications. From those notifications, part of that will be, you know, please let your neighbors know. Please go to this website. Please opt in. You know, your information is what's going to make this system really work. And typically, historically, what the company has said, and I've checked with a bunch of different cities and towns, is that within the first week or two, you can see there'll be, on the map, on this real-time reporting, you know, thousands of green dots, and those are data points that are in the system. And within a week, there'll be thousands more red dots, and those are the people who've opted in just in the two weeks. Because it's very easy to do, the user interface is very easy. It walks you through it, it answers your questions, it does everything for you. So, I mean, I'm not that great with a computer, but I can walk myself through it, and most everybody can't.
The timing's right. Ten years ago, you couldn't have done this because maybe one and two people had the PC in their house, and now, I think it's like a refrigerator. It's almost, you know, a mandatory appliance in many cases, so.
Like I said, we're going to assist, and people who can't make it to the, or if they need to, just come to us. We don't want to overburden the public safety, but we'll walk them through it. We'll do what we can to make sure that they're in there. So, if they need to come down, we'll take care of it that way, too, so.
May I ask you, Mr. Kyra, is this the same system that the school department uses currently? Or is it, is that a separate?
It's a different system.
It is a different system. Is there intention, or would there be economies going forward to marry them somehow or to somehow couple them?
I'm not sure. Something we can certainly, certainly look at.
Just, it was just a thought. I'm a recipient of some of those school department messages on occasion, and I'm thinking, I wonder if there are economies associated with that.
If I may, the difference in that is, I believe, connected is what's used by the school system, and theirs is based on a user-provided database. In other words, the school department will take all of the people who are in their database for that school year, parents' information and phone numbers. They load that into the database, and that's how they get those messages out to you and into the parents. The important thing about this system is we're able to isolate a neighborhood.
Okay.
It's, the database is there, we just pick what we want to use. We don't have to load all that information in like the school department does, which works great for the public safety department.
Sure. Thank you.
Deputy, the way I hear it, the way it's going to work with the multiple departments is, will they be like, say the Board of Health has a problem, they want to notify the certain areas. It goes through dispatch, would be through the police department, and they're the ones that are going to put this out, or it be solely per department?
The Board of Health will be able to do it themselves. They'll have access. We'll work out the details on, I'll sit down with Mr. Kyra, and we already have come up with a preliminary policy for the police department on how to use this, and I think we're going to have to work on pretty much a department-wide policy on how and when it should be used. But they want, you know, not everyone is going to have access. Not everybody at the DPW will have access to going to the system. You know, they'll just be whoever the department heads designate as users for that system, but they'll be able to make their own notifications. And I think, we've talked before, I think, for the most part, when we do a notification, it'd probably be best if we CC you and let you know what the notification is, just so that people know when it's going out.
The notifications are going to be limited, obviously. We're not going to be sending notices out that the, you know, the meeting is canceled because of lack of quorum or something like that. Those kinds of things aren't going to go. We're talking about very serious public safety, public health-related issues are when we need to be very instructive on a particular, on a particular matter. The, and the other point, I just want to reiterate, and I know that the selectman shampoo and the deputy spoke about it, is that if you are in, if your phone number is listed, you're in. So, people should understand that, you know, so that there's not a, you know, seven or eight thousand calls tomorrow. If, if, most people have their phone number listed. If your phone number is unlisted, for whatever reason, then you have to take advantage of what the deputy has just described. But be assured that you're a part of the system if your phone number is listed. And the other point I would make is that we have funded this from within the budget. There's been no, you know, outside or special appropriation. This is all being funded from within the public safety budget, and it's being built in for future budgets as well, at about $12,000 a year.
Yeah, I just wanted to expound on what you said. The people who are in the White Pages are in, but it would behoove them, even though they're already in the system, to go into that portal and add...
If they want to add.
The other information, if they want to, to make sure that, you know, their cellphones or whatever other notifications that want to be made, so. We are starting, I haven't got the final numbers, but there's, as far as the residents go, I want to say they have close to 10,000 numbers anyway, just in that White Pages, so it is substantial already.
Can I just ask the deputy a question? Unless the police department has done that, or unless with this new system, what's going to be the policy of the police department? For example, let's say there's homes being broken into, say, Silver Lake area. Is, has the police, have they done that? Or with this technology, will it be the policy of the police to contact the Silver Lake area that say there's homes that are being broken into, at least people being aware of this? That way, there's, you know, two eyes are better than, four eyes are better than two, and eight are better than four?
That's one of the alerts that's on there. It's a crime alert, crime bulletin alert. We've already, we've used that in the past. Like I said, it's difficult with the old system because it just, it took so long to make the phone calls. Usually Lieutenant Neville would write up one of the alerts in, like, a bunch of house breaks in the Hathaway Acres area, but he couldn't, the system was so difficult to use. It just, if you're not using it all the time, it was, you just couldn't do it. So, he'd come and see me, we'd get together, and we'd get one of those out. But we've done that in the past, and we will continue to do that in the future. Recently, I think within the last three months or so, we had a rash of house breaks, a rash of them, house breaks, car breaks, and we were making all kinds of arrests, but we still had a lot of these breaks. We put out a neighborhood alert, you know, keep your cars locked, please report suspicious behavior, even the slightest thing. We got hundreds of calls, and we made probably three or four more arrests, house break arrests, because people were calling in and said that they saw people that didn't look right in somebody's yard. And I, I give it a, is a direct result of those calls we made. We just had another one yesterday where a neighbor called and reported two people going into a house that didn't look like they belonged there. They went up and found out that they were breaking into the house, so. We will continue to do that.
I think it's a great policy, if that's what the police and the press is here. I mean, it'd be really nice to know that the community knows that this is available, and this is going to happen, and so therefore, hopefully deters crime. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, you know, but I think this is, it's going to be great for the community.
We have done it in the past, and we will continue to do it.
Glad to hear that. Thank you, deputy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I receive notification in the form of a text while I'm in my vehicle...
If I receive notification in the form of a text while I'm in my vehicle, will the new law that you're gonna talk about, will I be liable for that?
If you read it, yes. If you actually read it, yes.
Just a little segue into your next topic of-
It's gonna, I, I will go into this next topic, and, and there'll probably be a couple of surprises in here, but we'll, we'll go forward with those. This law has only been in effect now for 25 days. It, it took effect September 30th. And the basics of this law are that anyone under the age of 18 cannot use a cellphone or a mobile electronic device, is what they call it, at all, while they're operating a motor vehicle. That includes cameras, televisions, BlackBerrys, texting devices, PDAs, laptops, anything like that, they cannot use while they're operating a motor vehicle, unless it's an emergency. They're reporting emergency, they're requesting police or EMS. That's the only exception they make to this law. And at that, they suggest that they pull over to the side of the road, stop, and make that notification. For operators 18 and older, they may make a cellphone call, but they're, they're required to keep one hand on the wheel at all times. 18 and older cannot read or compose electronic messaging on any of those devices, whether it be a cellphone, a PDA, a laptop. That's the texting part of the law. If, if they read or compose one of those, it's a violation of the law. Now, the problem that we're running into is that it's difficult to enforce it, because, you know, if, if you're looking at your phone, are you dialing numbers, or are you texting? That's gonna be the difficult part of this. I, I think it's a good law. I think it's, it's needed. We've had far too many accidents, and, and a lot of it is inattention due to looking at your cellphone or reading text messages. There's some pretty stiff fines. The first offense is, I believe, on the, under 18, the first offense is $100, the second offense is $250, and the third offense is $500. And that also goes for texting while driving. Also, there are 30, 60, and 90-day suspensions for operators under the age of 18, if they're found responsible for, for one of these violations. A couple of questions have been raised. I was actually in my dentist's office the other day, and the secretary there started asking me about this texting law. And she brought up a valid point. She has a phone that does voice-to-text. She said, "My friends were texting me." And I said, "Oh, you can't be driving and texting." She goes, "No, my voice, it talks to me. So when they text me, it tells me by voice, and then I can text back by talking." I, I don't know where that stands. I, I, I don't know. I, you know, and, and that's gonna be just one of those issues that come up. I, I, I don't have an answer.
That strikes me as, as the solution. You know, voice, voice-controlled dialing, you know, I, when you're, if I'm sitting dialing, I'm doing the same thing I would be doing if I was texting. To me, if I say, "Call home," I can focus and keep both hands on the wheel.
Right, right. And that's, that seems to be the way to go. That's not the way the legislature wanted to move with this, apparently. Again, this is in its infancy, and, and we're really not sure how it's gonna work. I can just see, the people that I've watched, and I've been watching for years, I don't know if they're texting or dialing a telephone. And, and most of the police departments around here are running into the same problem, that, you know, although they see the use of a cellphone, they're not sure whether it's texting law. The point I want to make about this, though, is it is a primary offense, meaning, all an officer has to do is see somebody using that device, and they may stop the vehicle. It's not a secondary. You don't have to get stopped for speeding, or a stop sign violation, or something else in that secondary. This is a primary offense. So any officer who, he suspects maybe breaking this law, they can stop that vehicle and make their threshold inquiry and do what they have to do. The, the problem with the, the cellphones is, we can't seize a cellphone on a, a straight motor vehicle stop. If, if I saw somebody that I thought was texting on the phone, we make the stop, we gotta do our best to talk our way through the stop and find out what that operator was doing. In the case of, say, an accident, or where we're gonna be doing a criminal investigation, then we can seize the phone. And we're gonna have to get either a, an administrative subpoena or a warrant to go through that phone, and we'll be able to tell if they were actually texting, or, or using it inappropriately. But for a basic motor vehicle stop, or a violation of one of these laws, it's not something that we're gonna be, we're gonna be doing. It's just, that'd be overwhelming. So how this plays out in the courts, we, we don't know yet. Hopefully, people are getting the message, though, that, you know, it is dangerous. We did do, when this came out, we put the, the signboard up at the head of the common to let everybody know that the law was going into effect. Texting was against the law, and under 18, any cellphone use was against the law. We also had our safety officer and the, the school resource officer go out and hand these to all the high school students up at the high school in the parking lot for two or three days, to make sure that they got the message, that that law was in effect, and to use their heads and abide by the law.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just really appreciate you clarifying some of this stuff. It has been, and, the one big clarification that I got tonight was the fact that it's a primary offense. And I had, I had, walking in here, I had the thought that I'd had to, have to be speeding and then get pulled over. And, yeah, right, precisely, yeah. So that's an important distinction to make, and I hope everyone heard that loud and clear.
Yeah, that was one of the thing, I mean, everybody heard about the law, but they didn't, they don't hear it's a primary offense. That's all the officer needs to see is, is the use, and, and if they suspect somebody is under 18, then they can make the stop. And if the person is over 18, and they have one hand on the steering wheel, and they're just making a phone call, then off they go.
Yeah, I, I thought it was interesting, too. There's a couple of references in here for a couple of the sections, that the fact that there's a hands-free device doesn't affect the application of the law, too.
Correct. As far as texting-
Bit of a surprise to me, yeah.
Right. Which, you know, her, her comment to me, that, you know, "I'm just talking, and it's, it's texting," but that there's no distinction for that in the law, so. Although I think she's doing the right thing by word of the law, I, I still believe she's in violation. So, you know, you try to do the-
Does she turn up her radio?
Try to do the right thing, and see what happens, so.
Very good. Ready, Ken? All right. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for wearing your pink tie. Evidently, you got the memo.
I got the memo. I, I didn't have anything really bright, but as best I could.
Our next discussion is the local option meals excise tax. A couple of meetings ago, Selecton New House had mentioned that we should bring it up again. I believe we brought it up again in February this year.
We did, Mr. Chairman. We, as you indicated, it was requested back on September 27th meeting to include this as a future agenda item for discussion. The last discussion, as you indicated, it did center on additional revenue sources available to the town, and that was held in February of 2010. The intent of the memorandum that I provided to the board today is really to facilitate a discussion specific to the local option meals tax, which is what the board asked to discuss. As the board is aware, the town has the option of adopting a local option meals excise by accepting general law, Chapter 64 L, Section 2A. A majority vote at town meeting is required to accept this statute. A community's acceptance of the local meals excise becomes operative on the first day of the next calendar quarter after the vote, provided that date is at least 30 days after the vote to accept. For example, if a warrant article is adopted at this year's April 30th, 2011 annual town meeting, the operative date would be July 1 of 2011. That's when the meals excise would, would come in. We estimate that revenue generated by the adoption of the local meals excise in the town of Wilmington to be approximately $300,000 for fiscal year 2012. The most recent information available from the Division of Local Services of the Department of Revenue indicates that 116 communities have adopted the local option meals excise of .75 percent, three-quarters of a percent, up from the 72 that we last reported. And I've attached a listing detailing the local option meals excise status for all of those 116 communities. When we last reported on the matter, we specifically reviewed the actions taken by the 22 communities that either border Wilmington, of which there are seven, or whose borders touch Wilmington's abutting communities, of which there are 15. I've included for you an updated status for those communities. The communities that you see listed in bold have adopted the local excise since our last report. Those five communities specifically that we hadn't reported on before were Redding, Woburn, Lawrence, Lowell, and Stonem. So you can see that of the seven communities that border the town of Wilmington, Andover, Burlington, North Redding, Redding, and Woburn have adopted the program, while Billerica and Tewksbury have not. And then of the remaining communities, the other 15 communities, again Bedford, Chelmsford, Lawrence, Lexington, Lowell, Peabody, Stonem, and Wakefield have adopted the meals excise, while Carlisle, Drakett, Linfield, Methuen, Middleton, North Andover, and Winchester have not. 13 of those communities have adopted then, and five of the directly abutting communities to Wilmington have also adopted. So it's five plus, plus eight. The current meals excise is, as you know, six and a quarter percent. And all of that revenue nearest the state. So every, every town, because it's a state meals tax, has a six and a quarter percent surcharge, or an excise, on the, on the purchase. The revenue from a new local option excise of three-quarters of a percent on sales of restaurant meals that would originate within Wilmington would go exclusively to the town of Wilmington. And that's where that $300,000 estimate would come in. And then I provided you with some examples of what the increase would be to consumers. If the, if the bill is $10, the consumer would need to pay an extra seven cents if the town of Wilmington were to adopt this program. And $25.19, $50.37, all the way, if you were a big spender and spent $100 out at a restaurant, then the increase as a result of a local excise would be 75 cents on that bill. So if you have any other, any questions, I'd be certainly happy to provide information to you, but I think this is the information that the board had requested at the meeting in September.
It is, it is, and I appreciate it. And, well, you brought it up, Mr. New House, if you'd like to start the comments.
Sure, yeah. The, first of all, the manager already mentioned something that I just wanted to reinforce, and that's the fact that, you know, this is not the kind of tax that can be imposed on residents. This is the kind of tax that the residents would have to decide is right for everybody, is right for themselves at, at town meeting votes. So my purpose for bringing this forward is, really, in terms of consistency, anytime that the board has considered alternate revenue streams, or ways of saving money, additional expenditures, things of that nature, we always talk about it in terms of the, of the budget season, and the fact that, you know, that now is the time to start discussing this kind of thing, so that there's enough information out there in the spring, should we move forward with the town meeting article. With all that said, I, I personally don't think that it makes sense to budget for anything that's, that's a possibility, whether it's a, whether people generally think it's a likely possibility, or a remote one, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I don't think we should necessarily be asking the manager to budget in any kind of revenues from a tax like this, but rather to, to bring it forward, have a conversation, and let the residents start to think about it for themselves. I'll also say that, as recently as two years ago, folks, I've, I've talked about this issue with different people over the course of time. As recently as a couple of years ago, I'd simply say, my, my opinion is no. We don't need it. We've continued to, we've been able to continue managing without this kind of tax. You know, that, that like most folks, I get concerned that when there's another tax, it doesn't mean that other taxes are gonna be alleviated or reduced. So my initial reaction was, that's something we don't need. As the last couple of years have unfolded, I've, I've had this discussion with a number of folks who frankly have made some logical points that I get, and I, and I can concede a number of those points. And that's why I think it, it certainly makes sense to let the residents decide for themselves this coming spring. I think this is something that the board ought to put forward in the, in the warrant for annual town meeting, and let the, let the people decide. For instance, I've had people indicate to me, first of all, that it's a consumer tax. So it's a tax that, to some degree, people have the choice whether or not they want to pay it. You know, they either go out and consume things at a restaurant, or Dunkin' Donuts, or they make their coffee at home and take it on the run, and, and things like that. And, and folks, by and large, I think, are more comfortable at, you know, electing at some point to pay a consumer tax, unlike real estate taxes, which unfortunately, we as a, as a town have to impose, with some limited ability of people to abate those taxes and, and such. But I think that some folks say, "Hey, at least this is the kind of tax that I would, I would get a choice in." Above and beyond the town meeting vote, but on a day-to-day basis. Another argument that they have advanced is just the, the cost of the tax. You know, if I go to Dunkin' Donuts and, and get a medium black for $1.91, right, wrong, or otherwise, I usually tell them to keep the change. And if that change is, you know, a dollar and a half penny towards the consumer tax, then, then so be it. I can relate to that. I can relate to some of the numbers that people have thrown at me about going out for a $100 dinner and having the bottom line increased by 75 cents. I can get and understand how some folks would say, "Hey, if it's gonna, you know, inure a benefit to the town for a few hundred grand a year, and that kind of a consumer tax, that's something I might be interested in." Also, we've had folks talk about the daytime population of Wilmington. The count that I've always had in my head is upwards of 20,000 residents, I'm sorry, upwards of 20,000 people coming through the town during the, during the daytime hours. So to some extent, you know, this tax would be borne by folks who, you know, are visitors to town either on a daily basis or a sporadic basis. And with all the, the increase, we all know how many coffee places there are in town, the increase in number of restaurants, which I think is a good thing. That's something that people might be interested in. I've also made the point, and, and one of the most important reasons for being opposed to this tax was the concern that I had about deterring any potential customers from local business. You know, I, I always believed that there may be some, you know, some effect, some negative effect on local business, and that's the last thing that, that I would want to do. In response to that, a guy that I was talking to was playing devil's advocate, said to me, "Let me ask you, where's the last place you went to dinner outside of Wilmington?" And I told him wherever that was. He said, "Was there a meals tax?" I said, "I don't know. Didn't, didn't have the kind of effect that I even noticed." So all of these things and conversations that I've had over the course of the last couple of years has, has brought me to the position that, that there's credible reasons why folks might be interested in this. I know, some folks might disagree, but I don't think I'm a dummy. I get what's going on out there. I, I understand how people are hurting, and, and that, you know, it, just throwing the word "tax" out there has some negative connotation. I, I happen to believe that we need to be realists about the situation the town is in. I've said before, and I'll say again, that I believe that we've done a good job in terms of managing the town. I think that we are gonna continue to provide the services that we provide. I don't think that we ought to be out there making threats about what might be cut, and what, you know, what might be on the chopping block if we can't bring in some additional revenue. But it's also true that every year, it's more and more challenging to, to offer what we do. You know, to be able to offer the services we do without any user fees is not something that we should take for granted, and that we should just assume is always gonna be a possibility. So with all those things said, I just think it's a benefit that the board hears these numbers, that this information is out there, that people have the opportunity to think about it, talk about it, and come the spring, I think it ought to go before the people to let them decide what they want to do. to let them decide what they want to do.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, just before, I just, a couple of things you stepped, touched on that I think are very important. When I was on the Library Future Planning Committee there, one of the numbers that was brought up was 18,000-plus people come into Wilmington every day to work. And I thought that was a big number, and I'm glad you did touch on that. And so these are the people that are going to the gas stations, going to the lunch, to have lunch, going to the coffee establishments. So I think that's a big number. And like you said, it's a tax that we don't have to pay, you don't have to pay if you don't want to pay. Also, I think is a big number is the 40-some-odd communities that have adopted this just since the last time we talked about it in February. So the surrounding communities that have not adopted yet, are we even sure that they've tried to put it in front of?
No, not necessarily.
We don't even know that. But those were a couple of numbers that kind of stood out in my mind, talking about this issue.
I just want to make a quick comment. I understand that, you know, the town needs to look at other sources of revenue, and the state, obviously, and giving the town of Wilmington an opportunity to do that. Some folks have compared Massachusetts to New Hampshire about meals tax or whatever. But once again, people need to realize in Massachusetts, there's a state income tax. In New Hampshire, there isn't a state income tax. But obviously, the property rate up there, the property tax is higher, and they impose more of the taxes. So it's pretty much trying to balance that out. But the bottom line is, I think the state probably should have, and I agree with Mr. Newhouse, I've been a big firm believer, let the people vote, let it go to the town meeting, let the people decide what direction they want to go, and I've always been a big supporter of that. It's just unfortunate that our state legislators did not take the opportunity to maybe make it, make it seven percent across the board for everybody. They chose not to do that, and that is one of the reasons why there's a question three on the ballot. People are getting sick and tired of being nickel and dined to death, and they want to try to roll it back. I just think question three goes too far because I don't want to see, you know, public safety or our education get cut, you know? So question three is a serious problem. But given that climate out there, you know, I don't have an issue with going to the town meeting, let the people decide it, but, you know, it's just all these multiple taxes that are out there. And that's why we're facing question three today. If people at the state did their jobs and rolled back the taxes when they said they would and not tried to increase it, that's why we're facing this. And there's a possibility question three could pass. Not saying I can't look at a crystal ball, but there's a good possibility, and we have to be conscious of that fact. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have no problem. I think it, again, the people should decide, you know, if they want the tax on the local restaurants and let them vote on it. And, you know, I think I don't have the power to hold it back, and so I, you know, I would vote in favor of the put at the town meeting.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, at least on the point, that it needs to go to the town, to the residents of the town to decide whether they want to institute this or not. I will say, when it gets there, that I would use, at least from, with the information that I have and my general intuition, I'd use whatever pulpit I have here to argue against the implementation of it. The numbers are profound, and I don't want to mince words about it. $300,000 is $300,000. That's a lot of money. You can do some good things with that. And at a recent meeting that I was at, Mr. Kyra was there too. I think it was the, one of the selectmen in Bedford, or maybe Beverly, was saying that they had implemented it and had earmarked the monies that come in from the local option meals tax to like a Main Street beautification project or something. So it was, I don't want to say it was sold, but it was packaged to the residents in a manner that said, look, we're not just going to fold the money into operating expenses and buy sand for the roads, we're going to do something really tangible with this newfound quote-unquote money. That all said, it still feels like, I hate to use the euphemism, it's not mine, but others have used it, it still feels like it's lipstick on a pig. It's a tax. You said, we throw the word "tax" out there, it's a tax. I mean, how many more taxes can we continue to throw at people? And it's unfortunate that here we are at the, at the local level, the lowest sort of common denominator in terms of government. And to Mr. McCoy's point, our state legislation, the House and the Senate and our governor, had the opportunity to look at the way that they spend money. And instead of looking at ways to cut their spending, they gave us the opportunity to tax citizens deeper. And I just, I won't in good conscience ever vote, and I will encourage residents who care to listen to me to stop participating in the tax and spend mentality. I think enough with the taxes. Stop, let's stop government putting hands into the pockets, even if it's 75 cents on a $100 bill. That's 75 of my cents, and I don't want to give it over to the government anymore. I want the state government to look internally and cut their spending, and look at their pension systems, and look at the holidays that they give, and look at some of the fat cat jobs that they have, and let's go right down the line. Let's get the state to do the hard work before they give us the luxury of a three-quarters of a percent tax on our citizens. So I would say that again at town meeting, and I hope I have a chance to say it again before then, but I would vote in favor of putting the warrant on the article.
I'm sorry. Can I just ask the manager a question? Maybe I'm wrong. I thought when they gave the town these opportunities to raise these revenues, is the town getting the .75% or is the state getting .25% and the town gets .50%?
No, the state would get the .75%.
They get the .75%?
Right. The 6.25% all goes to the state, but the town would get the local option, which is the .75%.
The town fully gets the .75%?
Yes.
Because I thought, maybe I read it somewhere, maybe I'm wrong, you know, I'm not correct on everything, but I thought the state was going to get .25% and the town gets .50%. If I'm wrong?
Yeah, the towns are getting .75%.
All right. Yeah, just to reiterate too, we're not voting on this issue tonight unless somebody wants to bring up a motion. We're not going to implement any new taxes, whether it's 75 cents on a $100 bill or anything. This is just brought up as alternative source of income for the town, and if we want to put it into a warrant article to go in front of town meeting, just to clarify that. Do you have any other, any other comments or motion or anything?
I mean, if I heard it right, I mean, before I, you know, I guess the floor members tell me if I'm reading it right, I guess we're in agreement to at least give it a vote at the town meeting. So I think rather than prolong it and bring it back, I mean, I said I'm in favor, Mr. McCoy said it, Mr. Newhouse knows what he's.
I didn't say I'm in favor. To bring it to town meeting. My, in favor of it?
Yes.
I'll be honest, absolutely not.
No, no, just to bring it to town meeting, that's all I'm discussing.
Let the people vote.
And I believe Mr. Shampoo said that he's in favor to bring it to town meeting. So I mean, I have no problem making a motion to bring it to town meeting, and we can still have a further discussion if we want as a board later before it goes as an agenda, you know, I'm, you know, the item, right?
Just procedurally, I think what we can do is ask the manager to put it on his list of items to prepare for town meeting, and when we go through these things in the ordinary course, especially this current board, the last two to three years, has had agenda time for various warrant articles, you know? And I would expect at some point, this, if the board is indicating to the manager, you know, create a warrant article, go ahead and put it in the list of items that we want to address, I'd imagine would even have agenda time, and people can come in and, you know, express their opinion and, you know, things like many of the items that Mr. Shampoo brought up, which I think you made an excellent articulate argument for what has got people, it's driving people crazy, and I relate to that. But I think it'd also be good to have an opportunity, because I also hear people say, as sick and tired as they are of being taxed, and nickled and dimed to death is an expression that people have used to me. And, you know, people are sick and tired of being nickled and dimed to death. I also have people tell me, but, you know, I really don't mind paying the tax. I understand things cost money, I just, I can't stand how it's used. I can't stand, you know, how it's squandered and managed. And, you know, to that end on a local level, I'm curious if there are people out there who would say, look, at a local level, I'm satisfied with the job that we're doing, with the revenue that we have, you know? So I think it's great that the board says, let's hear from folks, let's put this on our radar, we'll include it in the warrant, and see what the people want to do.
To that point, if I may, the motion to, that I think Mr. Lepore was about to state, is it prudent then to see what language this type of, of an article would take on before we make a motion to put it into the warrant?
You need a motion? Yeah, I'm just, to me, to me, you don't really need a motion. The manager does, as a matter of course, you know, puts together a warrant that we all endorse and review and have public meetings on and ultimately vote on to accept it, to close it, to include things, not to include things. So honestly, a motion's not necessary if we're all, yeah, let's see what it is and let the people decide.
Just, you know, putting that forward just so further down the line as January comes with the budgets and everything, you know, articles that come in, I was just putting this to rest, so it's just not an item that we have to prolong, keep carrying it and carrying it. And that's the only reason I was saying I'll put it forward, because I heard, you know, all five of us say, you know, take it to town meeting, so that's when we're in agreement. So that's all. But you hit it on the head, I think, by having the manager put forward. And the other thing I'd just like to ask the manager, well, you know, we're having them put this together. As Mr. Shampoo stated, from example of another town of Bedford, when, say, the money comes in from this tax, how does it be used any specific way for the spending in the town?
That's something we could talk about, on how to word the article.
Okay, if they want to earmark it for.
We could limit it if we want to.
It needs to go into the general fund, so it would go into the general fund, but it can't be, it's not spent unless it's appropriated for at town meeting for a specific purpose. So you could, within the budget process, you could earmark it, but the vote would, the vote would be fairly simple. It would be to see if the town will vote to accept, you know, general law, Chapter 64, L. Section 2A, to establish a local meals excise. That would be, that would be the vote at town meeting. And then, much like any other revenue source that we get from car excise, auto excise, or from investments, from ambulance billing, or any other of the local revenue sources, this money would come in and become a part of the budget. But it's my understanding that you don't want to include it if this got, you don't want me to include this as a revenue source in the 2012 budget because it's not real at this point. So, but in order to, in order to expend anything, it's subject to an appropriation.
You go at the state budget using casino revenues two years ago.
Right.
Just asking that, only so the public would know where that money would be, you know, appropriated.
Do you have a question?
Steve Cost, 124, I'm a former state employee, selectman, chairman, so I'm a little offended by the conversation that the state hasn't done much cutting. In 2008, the state of Massachusetts cut 9,000 jobs. Some of those jobs were service jobs that were giving services to people in the Commonwealth. Tax pays small, minimal jobs at $30,000 to $40,000 salaries a year, for people that actually were in the trench working. In 2009, the year that I was unfortunately told that my job was dissolved by the Commonwealth, 13,000 jobs, 10,000 of them being in Department of Conservation and Recreation, the department I have and work on, were dissolved. Middle, some middle management jobs, the people who are making $70,000, $80,000, $90,000. So the trend in the legislature has been to cut jobs, to cut spending in the big pork belly areas. There hasn't been a trend of me losing my state job, me not allowing to collect a pension, I was not vested within the 10-year period that I was allowed to. The legislature, I can go talk to Ralph Nocelli, I can talk to Senator Bataille, I've dealt with many of the leaders in that state house, DeMacy. I actually had a beautiful, beautiful relationship with Senator Jack Hopp when I were in the Dorchester Rink. My job got dissolved because they wanted to give away the rinks, they wanted to give away public resources, what the taxpayers are paying for. And yet, the legislature has been cutting. The problem is, is that the spending and the revenue stream that's coming into the state, especially in these communities up in this area, Tewksbury, Wilmington, Andover, all go to New Hampshire to buy appliances, to buy televisions, to buy, that's where we're getting hammered. We're not getting hammered because all of a sudden, you know, Bobby Delia decides he wants to take a $10,000 raise. I mean, I think in all avenues of the Commonwealth, and there's been great, I was on the negotiation team for my union at one point, management was getting, was taking a zero, was a pay freeze. And in this trend in this community, we all know that the department heads, including the town manager himself, have taken a raise every year consistently, but yet asking of our town unions to take a zero, their first share of the contract.
I think you're going a little bit here.
But, I mean, the caveat.
What you're saying, that was not all totally true.
The state legislature has made some big cuts, and big cuts in areas of special needs also, budgeting of special needs, there's been a big cut over the years.
Do you want to say anything, Mike, about?
No, I appreciate your passion, and frankly, this is the discourse that now, starting tonight, we've begun, and we'll continue to educate each other, and hopefully we can have this conversation and have it multiple times in a way that's productive. And we, maybe there's a middle ground, maybe there isn't, I don't know, but I appreciate where you're coming from. I don't think we're going to get into a long discussion tonight on it, but there will be opportunity for us to do so. Thank you.
I don't want to, you know, debate what you just said, part of it, but, you know, the part about, you know, the residents, say, are these towns from here to the border, you know, up to Methuen and Drakett going to New Hampshire. The reason why they're doing that, doing that, going to New Hampshire is because they up the sales tax to, you know, six and a quarter percent, which is, you know, it's a hefty fee. And I believe it was the state government that did it, and state government, you know, proposed it. And so, you know, why, you know, we're looking at, you know, losing money in this part of the state is because of the increase that that, you know, the state has done. And so, I mean, some of that is held within the state house, not at local government area. That's all I'd like to add, which put a hardship on the strengths of the people in, you know, borderline communities. So, you know, it wasn't, you know, basically a tax, tax act that this local, they've increased it just to get the money in, but unfortunately, they're causing hardship to bordering communities. And I think that's where the tension's at in the light.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one more point? I mean, this is probably a question, Tom and Jokaro. Have we gotten less from the state in our local funding over the last five or six years? Have we gotten progressively less that you've had to balance the budget with the free cash that we have?
Not five or six years. If you go back, if you go back five or six years, we were getting less, but this, the last couple of years, we've been fairly stable, but that's only because they've addressed the inequities in the formula, in the state formulas, which we've been asking them to do for years. So we're now back to where we're supposed to be.
Just to, you know, because I know over the years at town meeting, you've made the point of having to throw a little bit of the free cash to balance the budget of the community to make sure that we're, our services are.
We haven't, we haven't used free cash for the last couple of years.
All right, thank you.
Also, you kind of misspoke on department heads getting raises and the union workers, that's not true. That's not true at all, just like you said.
Well, we all know what we're doing. I mean, we all do know what goes on in the community. It's much better secret.
Excuse me, you're making insinuations now. We're not going to have that here at this meeting. We kind of went off on a tangent of what we were talking about, so we're not going to have those conversations here. You just can't blurt out things at a public meeting that just aren't true.
Public information. There was a public information act that came out in the town choir. The teachers union had 0%. The public, public buildings are still sending out arbitration, all of that. We can discuss this, this is all public information that was released.
No, we're not going to discuss this tonight, Mr. Cost. We're not going to discuss it tonight. Okay, we're going to go on to communications right now, Mr. Tom.
The Department of Veteran Services Director, Mr. Semaglia, has invited the Board of Selectmen to participate in remembering and honoring our past and present veterans on Thursday, November 11th, 2010 Veterans Day, where the board is being asked to assemble at the Fourth of July parking lot and then proceed to the town common for the Veterans Day ceremonies at 11 o'clock. And that's, invitation obviously is to the community as well. There's always been a very, very good turnout at this event, and again, it's Thursday, November 11th, 11 o'clock, the Veterans Day ceremonies. We wanted to provide you with information relative to the annual bid that we have been running on surplus vehicles. running on surplus vehicles and equipment from the town of Wilmington. We will be accepting sealed bids for surplus vehicles and equipment. The sealed bids should be submitted to my office by November 18th, 2011, I'm sorry, 2010, at 11:00 a.m. All bids must be clearly marked on the outside of the envelope with the Town of Wilmington 2010 Surplus Vehicles and Equipment Sale, and inside must contain the item number for which each bid is placed, and the amount of the bid, and the name and address of the bidder. All items will be sold to the highest responsible bidder. There are several vehicles, including former police cruisers and Ford Crown Victorias, also a 1996 Ford Ranger, 2002 Dodge Intrepid. There is a flatbed truck, it's old, 1989, and the, the one item that we also have on here is the E1 ladder truck, where we're accepting a minimum bid of at least $10,000. The, as you know, the town will soon be taking possession of its new aerial ladder truck. We're expecting that the, the new truck will be delivered during the first week of November. We do have an arrangement with the company that we're buying the truck from, which would enable us to make the trade for an additional $10,000. However, we have been advertising in various sources, including this one, to see if we can get a higher bid. So if anybody is interested in, in purchasing the town's ladder truck, they can submit that bid, otherwise it's going to go with the, with the trade in. And there's also other equipment that we have, some plow equipment that is being made available. Anybody who is interested and wants to inspect these items, all of which are sold as is, can go down to Public Works Building on Andover Street from 6:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and take a look at the, at the, at the bids. And all this information is on the town's website, or if they want to pick up, and they can certainly get their information from the website, or if they want to pick up any of the invitations to bid, they can do so in the town manager's office or at the Department of Public Works. We have a letter addressed to Chairman members of the board from Xfinity, specifically Jane Lyman, informing the board about programming changes that are scheduled to occur within the community. There are a number of programming schedules, changes that have been provided, specifically certain new channels that are going on, different program lineup, and that's been made available to the, to the subscribers. The board is being asked to consider appointing Kathleen M. Scanlon as an election worker, and I would request that the board consider a motion to do so.
Question, comments, or a motion?
Move to appoint Kathleen M. Scanlon as an election winner.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? unanimous?
Board is being asked to consider the request of Brenda A. Stinson, treasurer of Kyle W. Stinson, Inc., for a one-day auction license to be held at property located at 355 Middlesex Avenue. We, oh, I skipped one item, but I'll just go to that. We do have a favorable recommendation from the police chiefs.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
With regard to number eight on the agenda, move to grant the request for the one-day auction license.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Okay, we'll go back to number seven.
Sorry for the slip of the eyes. The board is being asked to consider designating Saturday, November 6th, 2010, as Patrice Mendoza Day in the town of Wilmington. There is a-
Is a proclamation, mind if I read this here? Be resolved by the Board of Selectmen at the sixth day of November in the year of 2010, be observed as Patrice Mendoza Day. In the town of Wilmington, a recognition for her induction into the University of Massachusetts at Lowell Athletic Hall of Fame. The good wishes and congratulations of the citizens of the town of Wilmington are extended to Patrice Mendoza as we celebrate her remarkable accomplishments as a student athlete both at Wilmington High School and University of Massachusetts Lowell, where she excelled academically and athletically, culminating in her recognition as an All-American goalie in the sport of field hockey. I would entertain a motion for the proclamation.
I will move that we declare the sixth day of November this year as Patrice Mendoza Day.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Miss Mendoza will be in the area, she lives outside the area now, but will be in the area for the Hall of Fame induction, and we will make sure that if the chairman is available and Miss Mendoza is available, they can have a presentation ceremony.
I believe WCTV is going to do a special on her when she's back, I can hear, before the Hall of Fame induction.
That's great.
And the board is being asked to consider executing the agreement between the town of Wilmington and Town Manager Michael A. Kyra.
Mr. Newhouse? Certainly, Mr. Semaglia is a member of the Board of Selectmen, and the chairman has recused himself and abstained from any discussions and or negotiations relative to the town manager's contract. Being the most recent chairman besides himself, he's asked me to serve as acting chairman in, in those negotiations. The Board of Selectmen, recently in executive session through a number of sessions, came to an agreement that was acceptable to the board and to the manager. Those negotiations were pursuant to the reappointment that the board had made unanimously to reappoint Michael Kyra as the town manager for a three-year term beginning July 1 of 2009. In short, the substantive changes with respect to the contract are really just in terms of compensation and salary. In the first year of the contract, which, for the past, for the first fiscal year of that three-year appointment, Mr. Kyra worked without a contract and took a 0% raise. For the current fiscal year, the board has agreed to a salary of $140,000, and that $140,000 salary will be for the current fiscal year and for next fiscal year. I think it's fair to say that the board, in determining what was a, an acceptable salary, addressed such factors as the manager's individual job performance, salaries of similarly situated managers in similar towns, having the value of some continuity with his serving in that capacity, the relative cost of an alternative early retirement incentive for which Mr. Kyra became eligible in this past September, the prospective replacement cost should Mr. Kyra retire sooner rather than later, and likelihood of continuing uncertainty, economic uncertainty, both at the local level and at the state level of government. So, those are the, the items that the board considered, and that's what we're pleased to report to the general public tonight. There is some paperwork in the package, if, I don't know if the press has it or if it's readily available, but certainly that information is, is available in some detail. As part of the, the package here, it's, it's clear to the board that in all likelihood, unless something dramatic changes, that it appears as though that Michael Kyra would be retiring sometime in the second half of calendar year 2012. So that's, that's what's before the board, as the board well knows, but I think that certainly was appropriate to bring that information forward to the public. And if we have any questions, comments, or a motion, we'll entertain them.
I'll put together a motion that we grant the contract as we just stated and as written to higher, extend, you know, Mr. Kyra until the, the following two years if he decides to retire.
I would second the motion.
Anything further?
I just, I would only like to say, well, no, no, I will, I'll refrain. I do have comments, and not, not relative to the motion itself.
All those in favor? All those opposed? It's three in favor, and Mr. McCoy opposed, and Mr. Semaglia, having recused himself, abstains from the vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a quick comment, if I could, relative to this? All right, I'd just like to make a, just a quick statement. We're always going to have a difference of opinion. By me not voting for the town manager's pay raise does not in any way, shape, or form do not support him as town manager. I voted for his reappointment. I think the town manager does a good job. I believe the town manager and myself have a good working relationship. We may differ on some policymaking, but through it all, I fully support him as our town manager. And I can honestly look at the managers I'm speaking right now and consider as friends. However, I can't support the pay raise, simply put, because the economy is hurting. It is the worst recession since the Great Depression. I do believe people should be rewarded for good tasks and work they do day in and day out, and the manager has done a good job day in and day out. However, this is not the right economic climate to do that. In the past, I've voted more times for the town manager's reappointments and pay raises than anyone sitting here this evening, only because my years of service being here on the board. And I know if I call the town manager tomorrow, relative to constituent needs, I know he'll deliver, and I'll say it again, I think the manager does a good job, he is a good family man, he's lived in Wilmington all his life, and that's where we differ. And, and I, no hesitation whatsoever in picking up the phone, calling him, and I know he'll do things. When I call or request, we've always had that relationship, and I know we'll continue to do that. And that's all I really need to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Ma'am? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. McCoy, and I want to stress to anyone listening that the, the discussions and the deliberations that we undertook in coming to this conclusion, we had differences of, of the way we believed that we should go, but it was civil, and we were able to articulate ourselves in a professional, civil manner. And so I compliment you for, for being able to, you know, all of us, I think frankly, we handled it in a way that's the way that we're supposed to be operating here, as far as I'm concerned. That's why there's five of us, it's checks and it's balances. To that point, or to that end, I feel like the town of Wilmington, the residents of the town of Wilmington are getting and got a big bang for their buck in this, in this agreement with Mr. Kyra. I'm very complimentary of the work that Mr. Kyra has done for many years, and I'm very delighted that he did not exercise his, his option to, to take the early retirement and leave. I believe that it's, it's to Wilmington's benefit to have Mr. Kyra here for two more years, and I hope he doesn't, I hope he does retire, because I'm about to tell him that he, that he, we're, we're getting A1 service, and there's a, a list of what town managers make, and Mr. Kyra now is in the average rankings among income generators for town managers. I would say to you that Mr. Kyra is far and above the average town manager. So I, I thank you for taking the homey discount for us. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I was, I was just going to say that, but I guess I, I owe it to Mr. Kyra and to the town, especially in a vote like that. I guess through the years when Mr. Kyra took over, his first year, a lot should know Wilmington was actually in the red. He's taken that town and its platform of government appointments, people that he's hired, and the town has come a long ways. You know, again, the, the economy has been tough, it's been getting tougher and tougher, but Wilmington's, you know, been going forward. As he just stated five minutes ago, we are looking at a million-dollar fire engine, new ambulance for this town. In the past two years, I believe the highway, we've added on equipment at $200,000, $300,000 pieces. Even though jobs have been retired, we've still put people in those positions to fill them, we have not created vacancies. To a certain degree, we, we put a mandatory vacancy or a freeze. I think he served the town well. I, I first came on, and I believe the superintendent at that time was leaving of schools, and I believe the new one got a pretty good pay raise at that time. I asked a question, you know, and at that first town meeting of my, that I, I went to as a selectman, why? And again, they, you know, they, the pay scales were equivalent to what other professions were at that title. Again, I believe that he is the town manager, and he actually should be paid in accordance of all the time, all the effort, all the degree that he, that he puts together as far as a working position, contracts, hiring. He's accountable to the Board of Selectmen and to the people of this town, the public, as far as even his department heads, the town hall, the efficiency. He, he's, he is accountable to us and to you, the public. And I think he's done an outstanding job, so therefore, that pay, pay increase, and normally, I'm not a, one that goes for, for, just giving money away or taxes, and I believe, I studied this very, very well for a month or two, and I believe my decision to vote in favor was well worth it to not only respect to, to the town manager for his job, but to the public and the town of Wilmington, the people. I think he's served it well, and I think we should give him some recognition on that.
I think it's been well said. I would just add that, you know, I'd rather pay somebody, especially somebody that we believe is doing an effective job, I'd rather pay him to come to work than pay him to stay home. That's, that's my position, and, you know, to put it in perspective, based on the, the numbers that we've seen, we're basically paying just shy of last year's league average this year and next year for a player that I, I think is, we've all agreed, is, is better than average. Let's leave it at that. So I'm, I'm pleased at the outcome as well. Anything else?
I'll just echo Mr. Shampoo, I mean, obviously opposing views, but he is right. Very civil in there, there was no Donnie Brooks in there, we were very civil, we, and I said it before, even in open session, we may have difference of opinion, but we get the people's business done. And it's probably the, one of the more professional boards I've dealt with in many, many years, and I say, and I'll say it again, I enjoy working with the, my colleagues, we'll have difference of opinion, but I think we get the people's business done, and that means more than anything. And thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the regular business before the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Public comments. Hearing none, new business or committee reports? Start down here.
I've been good in that room? I, I'm fine, and I'm only kidding about the train. Thank you.
Mike? Nothing at this time. Ray?
I'm all set.
Mr. Shampoo?
As it turns out, I do have something to offer. In my capacity as the liaison from the Board of Selectmen to the I-93 Tri-Town Task Force, I was able to attend with Mr. Kyra, Carol Hamilton, and Mike, and Mike, and Mike-
Sartino.
Thank you, Mike Sartino, just jumped, flipped out of my head. There was a meeting on the 18th of October, I believe it was last Monday, if I'm not mistaken. It was a roundtable discussion with community stakeholders. It was organized by Congresswoman Nikki Sangus. It was at the Pfizer Building, the former Wyeth Building, and the discussion, or really the honoree, for lack of a better word, was Secretary Lahood. He's the Secretary of Transportation in the Obama administration, and he was here to talk, I, I think he was traveling the region, handling many issues, and Congresswoman Sangus cornered him and got him to allocate an hour or so to our I-93 interchange issue. Just as a, a brief sort of history, the I-93 interchange has been talked about for, gosh, I don't know, at least a decade, maybe more, in various iterations. In recent years, it's taken on some more momentum, and- In recent years, it's taken on some more momentum, and it seemed likely that we might be able to get a shovel in the ground as soon as maybe 2013 if U.S. Department of Transportation would configure or would approve a configuration that didn't connect to the west side of I-93 and South Street in Tewksbury, or if some connection could be configured that Tewksbury and the Trittown Task Force could agree to. And there was some loggerheads, and there have been, and we, no solution up until last Monday had been in place, but there was hope, and there was good hard work being done, and there was belief that at some point a solution would come up or present itself. Last Monday, Secretary Lahood stood up and spoke, and other people also spoke on behalf of this, the interchange on the whole, and much of the discussion was about jobs creations and revenues and what the interchange can represent to the region, to the three towns and to the entire region, from a cost or from a revenue generating perspective. And Secretary Lahood said, when he stood up, he says, "I see in front of me three towns that have their heads together on this, three towns that have agreed to stay together and plow a course." And effectively, and I asked Mr. Kyra to please correct me if I go in a path that is over-articulating it, but what I heard was him say that we can function, I think for him, as an example to other similar types of projects that he's overseeing around the country, where there isn't this kind of agreement. And so he pointed over in the corner of the room where we were, where there were multiple maps, multiple configurations, and he says, "If there's a configuration over there that you three towns can agree on, U.S. Department of Transportation will fund it." And that, I think, was a kind of a deadness in the room, and we all looked at each other like, "Did we hear what we think we just heard?" And we did indeed hear what we thought we just heard. So that's a real massive positive, because there was a configuration there that I believe there is consensus among the three towns. And the next step in this process will be, the Trittown Task Force will get together again and relook at the configuration in question. The configuration, I stress, does not have a local road access to South Street, and up until this point, U.S. Department of Transportation, at least the local representatives from the Department of Transportation, had maintained, "You've got to have a local road connection over there." Well, their boss basically said, "Don't worry about that. I'll take care of it." So that's, I think, very good news. Another component of this was that the widening of the highway from, I guess, Daskem up through, 495 up through New Hampshire was potentially going to delay the start of the project. It was coupled in with our project or with the interchange project, and so that was going to delay us now out, I think, to 2016 for start point.
Beyond that.
Even beyond. And he pledged that they would find a way to uncouple the widening from the new interchange. So all of that being said, it seems very positive. It seems pretty sure to me that we now have buy-in and support at the highest level of federal government to move forward with an interchange, and so I'm excited to report that to the town. I know it was reported in the press last week, but I'm excited to report it to you gentlemen as well. I think that bodes well, and I'm happy to say that hopefully in our lifetimes, we'll actually see some construction going on over there. So that's, I guess, effectively it. Mr. Kyra, did I miss anything?
I don't think so. I think you covered it pretty well.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say a quick comment?
Sure.
I appreciate everything that Mr. Shampoo did. I wanted to wait. I knew you would mention that, and I know Congresswoman Songas is not a congresswoman, but a congressman. But I got to tell you, she did a great job putting this thing together at the 11th hour, getting all the players together, and I got to say, even though I don't have an opportunity to vote for her, she did a marvelous job in putting this whole thing together. And I just got to say, I'm really glad to see that all the towns are working together on it, because the ultimate goal was obviously economic development to create jobs, but I'm really glad to see Tewksbury is more in line with its residents, because I remember seeing the new selectman, Selectman Wilson, making a comment, "Well, we can't really meet certain things. Maybe we should look at other alternatives." Well, I think the message was loud and clear from those 250 people living in the community saying, "Hey, no more continuation onto the side streets of our community." And I'm glad to see that happen, because I know Carol Hamilton brought information to us, saying that any town could veto anything, and I was glad to see that Wilmington was going to veto on Tewksbury, because Tewksbury wasn't in line, but I'm glad they put it together, and they're all on the same page now, and I'm glad for that.
There's a lot at stake, and I think all three towns and representatives from all three towns understand, I mean, we're talking millions and ultimately probably billions of dollars at stake here. So this was, this is real meaty, and I'm glad too that finally we got that level of authority, saying, "Don't worry about the little line of code that there has to be this local road access." So that really, that removed a block.
I may not agree, everything was Congresswoman Songas, but she really put this whole thing together, and my hat's off to her.
I agree. Thank you. Well said.
I just want to say that Congressman Tannen was at the, did go to attend the meeting, you know, our own congressman.
No, no.
You're right. Congressman Songas put the, yeah, she did coordinate it, but Congressman Tannehill was also at the meeting.
Thank you.
I don't want to belabor it, but, you know, extending kudos and whatnot, a number of planning organizations and regional economic development organizations that have really led the charge on that too, and made sure that the cities and towns that are involved in this really have a cohesive game plan. So it's, yeah, it's one of those things where it's just not typical bureaucracy. It's pretty unique, unfortunately.
Can I offer one more thing unrelated to that? I guess while I, while I'm still yapping. I want to compliment Mr. Kyra and the town employees that were integral into getting our Robert Palmet Park playground installed and up and running, and I was out there today checking it out, and it's modern, it's safe, it's clean, it's updated, it's a showpiece, and I'm delighted that it's there. I hope we can, over time, through private funding, add to it as time goes on, but regardless, even if that doesn't happen, I'm delighted to see what's there, and I'm delighted with the opportunity now to grow and to have that be a showpiece for our residents, but also for those that come and visit us and play sports in our backyard. So thank you, Mr. Kyra, for making that happen.
Mr. Lingeford, do you have a...
I'd like to ask Mr. Shampoo a quick clarification question. You may not know the answer, just my informational standpoint. Mrs. Hamilton came before us a while ago and said something about those little discourse with the property owners and the form-based code. Is the interchange configuration a separate issue? So they're going to move forward with that and then work out the other problems separate?
Yeah, there's two things running concurrently, and regardless of sort of when or how the configuration of the interchange happened, the form-based code component of it was running on a separate track concurrently, so that still continues to evolve.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, before we go to important dates, I would just like to thank the board for all wearing their pink ties, and even Deputy Richter was here with his pink tie, and Beverly with her nice new pink sweater on for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I appreciate everybody doing that. Important dates.
Mr. Chairman, tomorrow, October 26, is the school-based flu clinic for grades K through 12 that the town will be running in conjunction with the school department at the middle school from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and this is, we encourage people to go to the website and make an appointment if they haven't already. I think probably most, most parents have already done this. October 27, Wednesday, is a brush drop-off day at the old Main Street site from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and October 30, on Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., is also a brush drop-off site. October 28, this Thursday, just to reiterate what was told to us by the members of the Saracota Lecture Committee, the series continues with the 100th anniversary, featuring the ancient mariners Dixieland Band at the middle school auditorium at 7:00. Public is invited free of charge. The curbside collection of yard waste begins on November 1 and will extend for five weeks, from November 1 through December 3, where the town will be collecting yard waste at curbside. As always, please put your yard waste for collection out on the same day as your regular trash pickup day, and it should be in either biodegradable bags or in a container that is clearly recognized by the trash hauler as being leaves. On November 2 is the state election. The polls open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The polling locations are, as always, precinct 1 and 2 at the Boutwell School, precinct 3 and 4 here at the Wildwood School, and precinct 5 and 6 at Town Hall. And again, brush drop-off also on November 3 and November 6, as well as November 10 and November 12. An important announcement, we've mentioned this before, but the town-wide flu clinic will be held on November 6 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's a Saturday, November 6 at the Town Hall. We appreciate the good folks from the newspapers giving this as much publicity as possible. It is open to all residents of the town of Wilmington. It's their opportunity to get this free vaccine. The Board of Selectmen next meets on November 8. The Veterans Day Ceremony at the Town Common on November 11, Thursday. Reminder that town offices will be closed on that date, and the ceremonies begin at 11:00 a.m. at the Town Common. And again, advance notice, and we'll talk about this as we did last week. We'll talk about it again at the next meeting, but November 15 is the Olin Public Information Meeting that is organized and run by the EPA. That is at the middle school auditorium at 7:00.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.